Call the meeting to order. Stand for the prayer. Today as the session opens, we pray for your presence before us and, excuse me, if everyone serves the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be good for our city. We also pray for your special blessing for all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott. Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Not a present. Thank you. We're gonna get right into the mayor's business first. We have special guests with us and then we'll continue with the agenda. So with tomorrow being Veterans Day, special day for us here in the city and throughout the nation, we are honored to have Sergeant Major Doris Musgrave, USA retired. If you'd like to come up to the podium for a second, for a minute. So tonight, we had a, we were privileged to honor a veteran from our city and we're privileged and honored to be before you and to honor you for all you've done. I have a citation here that we've already read, but I'm gonna read it to the public now and we'll ask you to say a few words. Citation, be it here known to all, that the city of Lowell Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its congratulations and recognizes Sergeant Major Doris G. Musgrave, USA retired. For his years of military and civil service, Doris Musgrave was drafted in 1961 and was assigned to the infantry and military police and was deployed to two terms in Vietnam. During his first tour in Vietnam, he was awarded two Silver Stars. The Silver Star is awarded for gallantry in action and is the nation's third highest award for bravery in combat. He was also awarded two Purple Hearts, two Bronze Stars with V device, and Army Commendation Medal with V dice and Cross, the Cross of Gallantry with Silver Star by the Republic of Vietnam. After serving in Vietnam, Sergeant Major Musgrave was transferred to Germany and the United States, serving as a member of both the military police drill sergeant and sergeant major at Boston University's ROTC. Sergeant Major Musgrave served as active duty for military for twenty-six, over twenty-six years. After his military career, Doris Musgrave worked as a corrections officer before becoming a probation officer at Lawrence District Court. He served there for twenty-eight years. Retiring as an Assistant Chief Probation Officer, he is now a volunteer and a mentor and coordinator for the Veterans Treatment Court at the Lawrence District Court. Now therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, hereby offer all the best to Sergeant Doris Musgrave. The entire city of Lowell is proud and to honor him and thank him for his distinguished individual for his over half a decade of service in the military and the greater Lowell community. Working with Lowell and other veterans receiving treatment from the court is my honor, given this day of the tenth day of November 2020 by myself and the entire city council. And you're here with your wife, Uda, and their good friend, Chris, and they live over in God's country, Petuckerville, where they make their home. And we are just honored and floored by your accomplishments and your, you know, you would never tell anybody, but we're just honored to be in the presence of someone. I get exhausted just reading this, seeing what you do, and you're gonna continue for many more years. So we thank you very much. If you'd like to say a couple of words, we appreciate Counselor Rourke brought this to our attention with the Veterans Office, but please say a few words.
But thank you. I would like to thank the City Council of Lowell for such an honor to award me with such an honor today. It was surprising to see so many people show up in this condition of what we're going through with the pandemic. Of course, I'd like to especially thank Counselor Rourke, who I've known for a long time. We worked together for making the recommendation. And benign me, I didn't know that he knew so much about me. So, but I'd like to thank you and it was an honor to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if we're moving on, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
Oh, sure, we're gonna do that in one second.
Okay, good.
Okay, so we'll get to the moments of silence. I was gonna have Counselor Mercia go first and then we'll move on. So we will have moments of silence. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber for Irene Demoulis, widow of Telemachus Mike Demoulis, Supermarket founder and philanthropist. Proud of her Greek heritage, Irene was born in Lowell and was a lifelong member of the Holy Trinity Greek Orthodox Church of Lowell. Married for fifty-four years, she and her husband established the Demoulis Foundation and the Telemachus and Irene Demoulis Family Charitable Trust, which contributes to many community organizations throughout New England, as well as Mass General Hospital and Lowell General Hospital. Widely admired for her dignity, elegance, and grace, she was a loving and devoted mother, grandmother, and great-grandmother of four children, Frances, Glorian, Arthur, and Karen. Fourteen grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren. She was loved by many and we offer our sincere condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. And I'd also like to offer a moment of silence and duck in chamber to all those who have passed on since our last city council meeting. They all will be truly missed. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence for Fallon Moore Boyle, who died unexpectedly at the age of thirty-two. She's, she was born and raised in Lowell, Massachusetts. She died on August, October twenty-seventh, 2020, at her home. She was the daughter of Thomas and Diane, excuse me, Diane Laurent Boyle. Fallon graduated from Lowell High School, a class of two thousand and six, and after graduation, she proudly served with the US Army in Afghanistan. She was still actively deployed at the army base in Natick, Massachusetts when she passed away. Fallon was a communitant of St. Margaret of Scotland Church in the Highlands. She enjoyed spending time with her many, many friends and especially her mother, who was her best friend. She had incredible zest for life. She'd light up any room when she walked into. It was impossible not to smile and laugh when you were fortunate enough to have found yourself in her presence. She was the life of the party. The world will truly never be the same without her. She's survived by her brother, Thomas Boyle, and Brett Boyle of Lowell. Her countless aunts, uncles, and aunts. Very tragic loss. She will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If we could dim the lights. Thank you. Before we leave the mayor's business, I just had one other congratulations to offer to Lowell attorney Stephen Geary. He's become one of the newest judges over in Lowell District Court. He's practiced for the past twenty-four years with Geary and Geary Law Firm. Firm founded by his father, Bill, and his uncle, Gene Geary, which the clerk may know a little about. As the Governor's Council members interviewed Mr. Geary recently, a neighbor of his of the, a neighbor of his from the Lowell Lowell office described how Mr. Geary treated people experienced, experiencing homelessness and substance addiction with compassion and understanding. Many of his clients have experienced mental health issues, including bipolar disorder, severe anxiety disorder, and he has encouraged all of them to still be in touch with them if they need his support. The Governor's Council meeting last week confirmed Mr. Geary to the bench. Lowell residents may know Mr. Geary at his time as chairman of the City Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think we all know him from the former owner of Meadowlands Ice Cream Stand. So we congratulate Mr. Steve Geary and his family on his confirmation to Lowell District Court. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you. Clerk portion need approval of communications. Oh, all right, yeah, sorry. Communication, remote Zoom participation need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Oh, and sorry, and then we have recognition of the shopping, Lowell Shopping Network. Okay, all right, so we have Christine McCall on Zoom. She's gonna mention, she's gonna tell us a little bit more about the shopping network. Christine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the rest of the council and manager Donahue. I just wanted to make an announcement that the city, in partnership with the Chamber, Lowell Plan, CTI, E-for-all, and LTC, were launching the Lowell Shopping Network. Twenty-twenty's been a difficult year for all of us, but especially for our small businesses. So we're collaborating to encourage all of our residents to shop local. So the Lowell Shopping Network is going to be a two-day event prior to Thanksgiving on November twenty-first and November twenty-second. Right now, we're asking all businesses in Lowell, it's open to all businesses, to submit a two-minute video of their business, of a special, of something they're selling, a service, and submit it to LTC and they will actually create a commercial for that business to use for its own marketing purposes. And then during the Lowell Shopping Event on the twenty-first and twenty-second, LTC will air these commercials for two days straight on all of their channels, as well as be live on the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. We've also created a Facebook group, so for all residents at home, we're asking them to join this network, this Facebook group and tell us where they're shopping local, share their favorite business and, because we all know keeping our dollars local is going to help Lowell's economy. And so we just want to make a quick plug to encourage all businesses to submit a video, encourage residents to sign up and to shop local, and if any member of the council would be interested in helping us film a promotional video, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. We'll have Counselor Conway call you tomorrow. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, he can sing and dance, so do a nice commercial. So we're, so motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Mercia. City clerk business. Need motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Finance Subcommittee, joint with School Committee Finance, October twenty-seventh. City Council regular meeting, October twenty-seventh. City Council meeting executive session, November seventh. See a motion by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Counselor Mercia. Place on file. Not being up, not being seven o'clock, we'll get into, where are we? Communications from the manager. Any questions on motion response, A, COVID-19 second wave preparedness? Any questions on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chow.
Thank you, the city manager, for this very comprehensive report. The, when COVID hit us back in March, I know that everyone in our city and administration were in a frenzy to put together different programs, policy activities, to make sure that the residents of our city are safe and healthy. And the city did a fantastic job working with different organizations, community partnerships, and so forth. And as we know, we're now in the second wave or whatever wave that you would like to call it, but we're getting hit pretty hard just because of the normal cycle of this virus and this pandemic. And this report here really outlines, very, very comprehensive from the city effort to with community organizations, dealing with statistics, with information, and so forth. I do have a question, maybe through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, if you could expand on this report a little bit. I think a couple of questions that I have, maybe if you could answer as part of this of your report. I know that back, back in April and May, at that time, because many of the public buildings and community organizations buildings were empty, like the UMass Lowell Soncus Arena. And so we tried to work, in case we have a situation where the influx of patients would overwhelm the healthcare system, the hospitals, there were beds that were made readily available back then. But now that, you know, many institutions are back into operation as well, in case we have a big influx of people getting infected by COVID-19 and overwhelmed the healthcare system, do we have some plans like that in place? That's one. And the second question is, over the summer, we had the rapid testing at Lowell Showcase Cinemas, and that was a dual program between the city and the state, and that was very successful. I know that we don't have that rapid testing site anymore. That was for the summer, but about a month or two months ago, there were testing sites that was offered by Lowell Community Health Center and then different organizations. Are those testing sites still available? I know it's not rapid, meaning it's not, you don't know right away, but are they still available to the public at free of charge? And are there any work, are there any plans in the work to get more rapid testing sites going on in Lowell for the next couple of months? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, answering some of the questions raised by Counselor Chow, specifically regarding the healthcare system and whether we are preparing in case the system is overwhelmed again or potentially overwhelmed. That's always top of our minds and we did learn quite a lot in the spring, in March, and April, in order to monitor cases very, very closely, the capacity of the hospital very, very closely, and work with our partners, both, both here in terms of the city and healthcare, as well as with the Department of Public Health and Mima. So at the present time, Counselor, all of the data that we're monitoring, there hasn't been any concern on a local level or actually in most of the hospitals in the Commonwealth about reaching capacity. It is something that's watched every day, not just for inpatient capacity, but also ICU patients and admissions. And, and we watch that every, every day with our partners at Lowell General. So to answer your question, if, if the need started to appear that we need to take steps, we would certainly do that. And as I said, having worked through this the first time around with the university, determining where a field hospital is appropriate, using the athletic center over at the university, I'm sure we could call on the university again to do that in quick, quick time because of the experience we had the first time around. But we're hopeful that won't happen. And I think some of the things that we're hearing this time around is though the, the virus is spreading, and I can't stress that enough here in the city, the cases are increasing dramatically and have for the past few weeks. We are, I think the medical community are treating these cases sooner and are having some success doing that, trying to keep people out of the hospitals. The other area that, knock on wood, so far, we've had more success, and that is in the nursing homes. I think there were lessons learned early on in the pandemic and nursing homes have changed their way of doing business, letting people in or visitors, and how they, they handle patients if there is a positive case. So we have those, there have been some cases, nowhere near the number of cases there were earlier in the pandemic. So those are just, again, I think experience has, has helped guide us on that. So moving forward, we will continue to monitor that very closely. On the testing sites, Counselor, you are correct. We had, we had the only one in the state, the rapid testing. That was a partnership with the state and the federal government, and CVS, who was paying for that. They had three or four in the country, and then the, the funding for it ceased. And so that's when it ceased all over the country, when, when ours did. There isn't any plan of, that I know of, from the, those partners of bringing that back anywhere. The, we then had Stop the Spread, a Stop the Spread site. That's a site that the state government has paid for, and we had it here for about four to six weeks into the, into the end of September, I believe, is, was when we were having Stop the Spread. We were a green community at the time, and so the state moved Stop the Spread to what were other red communities. We know that since that point, we've become red, but there are eighteen sites, Stop the Spread sites across the Commonwealth that anybody can go to. You don't have to live in the community, anybody can go to for a free test. It's not the rapid test, but anybody can access free testing at the eighteen. And if you go on the, and we have a link to it, but to the state website, you will see where those are. There's one in Lawrence that might be the closest one that is here. So residents can access that. I've had conversations with the secretary, Secretary Sudders, I know, also with the delegation who are working hard. Rep. Golden has had conversations as well with our partners in the state to try and bring back testing here, right in Lowell, so it's more convenient for people. And, and that's a work in progress. So there doesn't seem to be any immediate resources to do that, but we are working with them, talking about that. We have also started exploring here, using our own CARES money to try and have some testing here in the city, albeit the state wouldn't be sponsoring it, we would be sponsoring it. So we're, that's, stay tuned, we're hoping we can work out the details. It's very complicated to try and get that up and going, but it is really a priority. We also, as the report pointed out for, there's a section on how we're handling employment and employees, and we did contract with Trinity Ambulance, who is a certified and registered test, tester with the state and Maven system. And so they, we are offering tests to our employees. If an employee has a contact, if something that they may have, they've been told that they had a contact with someone who was positive, we're able with Trinity to get them tested within the day and very quick results. So we're very happy to have that partnership that we, you know, are, have contracted with Trinity to do that. So we're gonna continue to explore all avenues, even if it means spending, you know, CARES money for, to do that, to try, until the state can come up with a program for the testing. We, we see that, I mean, masks and social distancing and hand washing all remain very important, but we see testing as really important as well, so that people aren't delaying getting a test. Maybe they wait a couple of days because it's not as convenient for them. So we're, we're working very hard to get something stood up soon here in the city, at least through the end of the year, until the state may come up with new contracts for January.
Thank you, Madam Manager. From, from your report and from your detailed answer, I know and I want to commend you and your administration for being really ahead of the curve. I, I know that the numbers that's been presented the past couple of weeks has been alarming, but that's not just, that's not just for the city of Lowell, that's statewide and across the country. And with your work, working with all the community partnerships, and you really planning things two, three steps ahead of what's happening across the state and across the country. So I feel very confident that Lowell will come with this, now despite the, the numbers, but I still feel that we are much safer community than, than many other towns and cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Managers and your team for the report. There's currently thirty-five free testing sites spread across those eighteen cities, as you mentioned. Given the fact that we have the highest, higher rate of case per hundred thousand people than six of those, you know, eighteen cities, it's incumbent, it's important that we have free testing back, as, as you indicated, back in July and September. Those free testing that been traveled from neighborhood to neighborhood in the city of Lowell has been successful, have worked very well for those who cannot afford, those who have insurance, difficulty access, if you live in Centerville, you don't have car, you're elderly or whatnot, you can just, you travel, the testing site travel, you know. So I, I would urge you, I know you've been working, I know, you know, you've been listening, hearing from me very often about this. I think we need to bring, we need to impress on the governors and his people that, look, we don't want to go back to, you know, April, May, or June. The, the last couple of days was fifty, sixty per day, and that number, we need to stop that number. You know, we now in the red, we are worse than those eighteen city and town, and we should be having a free testing site coming back here for our resident. I know you've been working, I know that, you know, you, you want partner like Lowell General to help, and you want partner like Lowell Community Health, Trinity has been great. So I'll just urge you to please continue to work to try to get that testing. to please continue to work to try to get that testing, free testing back to our city as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with, you know, the continued data being shown that, you know, schools are not a spread of the virus, and the guidelines that have been adjusted to show as such, and I guess the deal in place that December 1st, I guess, is the new deadline in place with, between the school administration and, you know, can parents expect a change come December 1st for their students and for their kids to, you know, for some return to schools, you know, to be put in place? You know, Lowell has been taken off the list since these new guidelines have been put in place. You know, maybe, Mr. Mayor, could be a question, you know, for you, sitting on the school committee. It's just, you know, it's a question that has been asked of me since this has happened. And again, you know, it's proven data over and over again that schools are not a place where the virus is spread.
Yep. So, what we're doing is, we're actually having a meeting Thursday to discuss a reopening plan. But I will tell you, we're trying to do this right and trying to get it to work with everybody. So, basically, I don't see us opening until after the Christmas break, but that would be our target to get through the holidays, come up with a plan where everybody's on board, and open up the schools and get as many kids back into the classroom as we can. So, that's what we're doing. We still don't really have a, an MOA with the teachers' union yet, so, still working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, Madam Manager.
Counselor, I do know that DPW has been working with the school department and facilities to try and get prepared for a reopening, which would include not just the exterior classrooms that have been prepared during this first opening, but also interior classrooms outfitted with, you know, the air purifiers and so forth. So, that's ongoing.
Mr. Conway, Counselor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the, to the city manager. That's a great report, and, you know, and I certainly applaud, applaud you and your team for putting that together because of the fact that, I mean, there's so many moving parts to this. And you, I think, would certainly, and your team, would know better than most, certainly us, that, I'm sure you're getting telephone calls every day, you know, dozens and dozens of telephone calls saying, oh, by the way, what we did yesterday, we're going to have to change it or improve it or whatever. So, again, I applaud you for the flexibility of putting together a great report. Just for a point of clarification, on those test kits from the state, the state actually supplied the test kits. Is that, is that correct?
In the Stop the Spread campaign?
Correct.
Yes, yeah. And then, the communities would, would come up with the, you know, how those would be administered, or how those would be staffed.
So, at this point, and again, just from my own clarification, and is the, can we still get the free test kits? It's just a matter of trying to get someone to administer them? So, nothing is free at this point?
Nothing's free at this point.
Okay.
But that's why we're exploring using CARES money to pay for, and we have discussed this with Trinity Ambulance. So, we're working very hard to try and do something to fill that gap right now.
So, with this, let's just jump for a minute and assume that, especially with Lowell being as high as it is, and if we do receive, you know, they change their minds and they do come up with the free test kits. What, where do we, where are we going to administer? Who is going to administer that at this point? Would the hospitals be, be part of that?
Well, that's the question.
Okay.
I do want to say that the hospital is doing testing. It's my understanding. It's patients who are referred to them by their treating physician. They had been doing testing at the main campus, and I did get a message from Jody White that they're going to be moving that to the Saints campus, but that's not free, and it's also not, it's with referrals. And the Lowell Community Health Center, I believe, is also going to do testing. Again, I believe that's for their patients. And so, there are two sites in Lowell that are testing. But what we're talking about is free without a referral, and even if you don't have symptoms, that you can go and get tested. And that seems to be really in demand.
Right, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and want to take the opportunity to echo so many of my colleagues here tonight in just, you know, stressing that, you know, I think a testing site would just be a huge value to the community, not only for us, but also we're surrounded by communities with rising numbers and that are getting into the high-risk categories. Also, on the issue of testing and schools, I saw the other day, the Commissioner of Education made a statement that I found a little bit questionable in that essentially almost discouraging asymptomatic testing in schools, just based on, I think, the supply of tests. And I think because even though there isn't a lot of spreading in schools, we have seen that oftentimes younger children can carry the virus asymptomatically. So, even though it may not be spreading in schools, it could be going, you know, from one person to another. And I do think that if we are working towards a school reopening, that finding some way, and I'm not quite sure if this is a school district question or a city question, so I guess I can direct it both to the mayor and you, Madam Manager, but perhaps finding some sort of way to do some sort of asymptomatic testing for school staff and students. I happen to see that Tufts University came up with a somewhat innovative program that they've extended to the cities of Cambridge and Somerville that has to do with pool testing.
Yeah.
So, in other words, there is not, you know, necessarily a test given to each student, but they've developed a way to test each week, a pool of students and staff, and that small number of tests can actually show you if there's potentially a spreading event happening in that school before it really happens. So, I know it's only being done on a small scale. I don't think it's scalable to other communities throughout the state, but I did just want to, you know, weigh in to say if we are moving in that direction. I think finding some way of, for asymptomatic testing, whether it's, you know, citywide or specific to schools would be important.
Your Madam Manager.
Yeah, thank you. And to Counselor Drinkwater's question, that did come up on a call with the governor last week, and you're correct, they are doing pool testing in conjunction with Tufts and, in a hospital down there. But, you know, in terms of schools. But the governor did mention that there is another technology that they are looking at that's being developed, and that would, it's not exactly pool testing, but it would be more suitable for schools. It's cheaper, it's more rapid. And so, again, it's in early stages. He mentioned Abbott Labs. So, they are, they are looking to that. It remains to be seen how, you know, how it would be distributed and paid for and so forth. But I just wanted to share, I mean, as we've talked about over the, certainly the summer and the fall, there were days we had zero cases. It was, we were like, you know, putting out a cheer when we had that. And just to give you a snapshot of what the past few days have been, and they do bounce up and down, but Saturday, we had 93 cases in the city, Sunday 65. Monday, we thought we're on the right track. We had 27. And then today, we had 75. So, the cases are escalating. And, you know, it is just so important that we, everybody understands what's happening with the virus here in the city. So, we, to date, we have a total of 4,713 cases since the beginning here in the city.
All set. Thank you. Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you for the report, Madam Manager. Counselor Chow's motion, I think, was very timely. Everybody's basically addressed, you know, questions that I had. But I also wanted to say that I think a lot of us have received a number of calls from people saying, you know, so-and-so got sick in my family, or someone who's, a friend of, a friend got sick, and we don't know where to go for a quick test, or, you know, things like that. They just do not have that ready, knowledge readily available. But the thing is, I know you're doing the best that we can. And I was also going to talk about comparing what the university's done, but when we talked about that, the university's also spending millions of dollars, literally,
Yeah.
in doing these tests. But you know what? They work. So, the question is, is there anything else that the city council can do in form of a referendum or anything to assist you in getting that knowledge, information to the governor? Because it comes down to money. We don't have the money, but the thing is, we have the responsibility. And my concern is, is there something else that we can do?
So, Counselor, you know, the, we have put it on the radar of the governor and the secretary. They are well aware. But if the council wants to send, you know, a message directly, as I said, I did send a letter to the delegation, and they have weighed in, you know, with the, with the state, with the secretary. So, they do know this is a major issue here in the city. We do have CARES money that we are trying to just utilize. We're trying to marshal that right now, and so that we can get some testing here, even though we're paying for it, because it's that important.
No, you're correct, and you're doing the right things. But, you know, as we've stated before, and everybody's brought it up, it's about money, it's about having the right amount of money
Right.
to spend. There's just been a major election, and what's been addressed, you know, rapid testing for everyone.
Right.
So, the thing is, I think it's our time to hit, but what can we do, again, to support you? So...
You know, I would be happy to send a letter directly to the governor and to the secretary on behalf of the council, just, again, raising this, that this is urgent here.
I mean, thank you, because, I mean, it's feeling we're trying to do something. And I think we have to go on record to say, this is important, and, you know, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All set on this? Being after 7:00, we'll go to the general public hearings, and then we'll continue back with communications. 4-1, ordinance amend zoning. Second reading, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of City of Lowell, Massachusetts with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled zoning by extending existing suburban neighborhood multifamily zoning district to include the areas of Rivers Edge Road in Lowell. So, they asked for a continuance for this, so I need a...
I believe, I believe Attorney Murphy is on the phone representing the petition on this, so...
So, I'll open up the meeting and open it up to all those in favor.
I believe he's here, but his request was to continue the matter until December 8th. Hang on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Leahy. Kevin Murphy for the Lowell Housing Authority. This petition for zoning change before the city council is relative to the final phase of the reinvention of Julian Steele. We are working with the planning department to come up with a plan that would be acceptable to both the housing authority and the city council, because in the end, not only does the city council have to approve the zoning change, but they would also have to approve the actual plan of units that we want to develop out there. That's according to the enabling legislation for the reinvention of Julian Steele. So, what we're asking for is a continuance for a month, so that we can continue to work with the development services and the planning board to come up with an acceptable plan to the city and to the housing authority that we can present to the city council for hofa approval.
Thank you. Any questions? I just need a motion to continue the matter to... What's that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. When I saw the words, no finding, I checked out through City Hall and the solicitor's office, what exactly did that mean? And it meant that they did not get the green light from the planning board. So, if we made any attempt to make a determination tonight, that would kill this project, and I don't think it's worthy of having it see its demise. I would suggest that we do continue it for a month, so that people can iron out the differences. It seems to me that we don't want any overcrowding and just shoving people in there. So, I think it's a question of how many units, and I think it would be a good idea if we did continue this for a month, so that people can work it out. This is, because this is the last phase of that project, I believe. So, we'd like to move forward in a way that protects everyone. So, that's a good suggestion if we could delay, continue it to December 8th. Someone made the motion, and I'd like to second it. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't, did someone make the motion?
I did. So, move.
All right. Flip a coin. So, Counselor Samaras, and then Counselor Mercia, second. Continue to December 8, 2020, 7:00 PM. All set on that. 4-2, order abandoned portion of Warren Street and portion of Heard Street. Second, second reading, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council order to vacate, discontinue and abandon certain public interest rights easements in the portion of Warren Street and portion of Heard Street in the City of Lowell. Open up the hearing to all those in favor.
There is an individual on the line that is speaking in favor.
Have the speaker go first.
Adam Goldstein.
Hi there. My name is Adam Goldstein. I am, and so, the project manager is funded by MassWorks Grant and governed by a grant agreement between the City of Lowell, UTEC, and Mass Development. And this petition will allow for portions of Heard and Warren Street to be abandoned, so that UTEC's park and the public park can be created at the corner there.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer to the clerk's office for seven days by Counselor Mercia, second, by Counselor Samaras? Where are we? Okay. And then, 4-3, ordinance rental property manager, manager imposed. Second reading, Commonwealth, Massachusetts, City of Lowell and City Council ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, as amended by, amending Chapter 176, Article 1, rental property by deleting 176-2 in its entirety and replacing it with new language. Open up the meeting to all those in favor. In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up the, to anyone opposed? Anyone in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt by Counselor Elliott, second, and by Counselor Drinkwater. Roll call.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rock.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Thank you. Back to the communications. Motion response, Downtown Business Coordinator. Any questions on that? Counselor Noon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Madam Manager, for the report. I just want to ask that you keep us updated, should there be any possibility of, you know, other funding come along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Madam Manager.
I know Christine McColl's on, but I think through her staff, they've been able to kind of cover the bases and do the work that a coordinator would, would have been doing, keeping in touch with the businesses and their needs, especially during this pandemic.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion response, C, Affordability Housing Trust Fund. Any questions on that? That Counselor Noon also?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Again, Madam Managers, thank... Thank you again, Madam Managers, Diane Trad, and Philip Farrar for the report. If I may ask, Mr. Mayor, to refer this to the housing subcommittee, to know you, to really deal more into it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Motion by Council Noon, second, and by Council Drinkwater. The housing subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
Motion response D, permanent home for the eighty therapeutic day school. That was my motion. Any questions on that by anybody? Just Madam Manager, can I just, I read the report, but it doesn't seem like we have a place in mind right now, right? So...
I know Christine McCall's been working with the school department. She's on the Zoom and can answer it. I think, I think many of the potential sites have been vetted and have been found not to be suitable, but this might be something, I don't know if Christine wants to address it, I don't know whether a joint subcommittee wants to take this matter up. I mean, there are, you know, some of the things are financially prohibitive, but maybe there's other things that can be done.
Okay. Christine?
Hi, thank you, Manager Donahue, Mayor Leahy. Yes, DPD staff met with representatives from the day school and from the public school, and I agree with Manager Donahue. I think it might be useful to have a joint subcommittee meeting. Most of the locations, both publicly owned or privately owned, there are financial constraints, either the property itself is cost too expensive to purchase, or publicly owned property, or requires a lot of investment to make the appropriate ADA compliance. And then this school population does have a specific need, and so it can't just go into a typical building. So I agree with Manager Donahue's recommendation for a joint subcommittee meeting, and we will, you know, we have the requirements for the school, and we will keep an eye on available property throughout the city.
Thank you. Sure, why don't we probably refer this to what, the joint facilities subcommittee meeting?
Either that or finance, either one, I think, would be appropriate, but it's, I think it's important that we have direct conversation with the school committee about this and understand what their priorities are, so that we can, both sides can talk to each other.
All right. Well, we sent a joint finance subcommittee meeting. Motion by, by Council Mercy, a second, by Council Elliott. Thank you. Motion response E, upgrading intersection of Wedge, Campbell, and Laura Streets. Council Chow, any questions on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam City Manager, for the report. That's a strange intersection in that area of the upper Highland, when you have two T intersections in opposite of a main street in close proximity. And in the report, it states that, you know, we requested a four-way stop sign, but stop signs, according to report, it doesn't really slow down traffic, doesn't slow down people who really want to speed, no matter what. And I agree with that, just in that area, when you have two, two elementary schools, the Bailey and Daily, and you have two baseball fields, a lot of kids walking, I guess, you know, the best solutions right now is to put one stop sign on Laura Street, and we appreciate it, I appreciate that, and the residents appreciate that. Hopefully, that will do much of the work, much of slowing down in general, to have people stop at the intersections and just for the residents in that area, if, you know, this stop sign doesn't work in the future, if there continue to be people speeding in that area, please let the councilors know, and we'll work, we'll see what other ways we can do to slow down traffic in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Motion response F, pothole technology. Any questions on this? This was a motion that I made for looking at new technology for potholes. So, Madam Manager, I guess just something to keep on record, and if we come into some money as we replace our equipment over in DPW, but when you see the trucks, it's, it'd be amazing to have something like this in the city, the way it operates, one person to operate the truck.
Yeah, and just the number of potholes that can be done in a day.
Oh, yeah.
That one truck.
Thank you. Informational reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Before we get into informational reports, I'd like to suspend the rules to discuss there being delays with respect to the doctor's office. I need a second.
Sure. Motion to, motion to suspend the rules by Council Mercy, a second by Council Rourke. Council Mercy?
Yes, thank you so much. Through you to the city manager, Madam Manager, Dr. Ray Cal and Dr. Wattman from Seventy-Five Arcan Drive, they're asking for support to help in scheduling the inspections, so that they can move from their long-delayed journey. One office was given a date of November seventeenth, but another dentist's office is about three weeks out, and both are ready to open at the Market Basket on Wood Street. I know that there's a fire issue with the permit, I know it's probably detailed, but if we could help them a little bit. I know that it's not easy, but, you know, they're all set, they have a lot of patients so far.
Sure, Madam Manager.
Thank you, yes, Councilor, this has been a priority we have through Eric Slagel's office, Fast Tract, and I have a whole list of, you know, through inspectional services, really expedited that. Right now, the request is, it's the fire department and fire inspection, as you point out, and that's, I have a memo from the chief and from the deputy chief. Essentially, what they need, it's final inspection, takes lots of fire inspectors to do it, and so the normal scheduling can take two to three weeks, just to get it all fit in. However, I believe this, they, the fire department responded when we sent this the other day, and they have been able to move it up to, I believe, this Friday. And so I think everybody seems happy.
Thank you, I'm happy.
But it is complicated.
Yes, I know.
But they, they're doing it as quickly as they can, all of the inspections, the sprinklers, all of that.
There's a lot of fillings that need to be filled, so I'm sure that...
We won't be, that's why we're talking about potholes, geez.
Potholes, fillings, so thank you, Madam Manager.
I think they're, I think they were pleased that it was moved up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to informational, winter paving, moratorium, Madam Manager.
Yeah, I believe, Mr. Mayor, Christine Clancy should be on the Zoom. This is, again, there's kind of a two-part report here, but it's reporting about beginning December first, that's when the moratorium kicks in, and it gives an update for the projects and how that would affect. I think the other point, oh, there she is, the other point that we wanted to bring to the council and the public's attention is, we have updated the rates for our plowers. This is a very challenging thing, to get enough plows in the city and be ready for snow. We wanted to be competitive, actually more than competitive, because we were down many pieces of equipment. So I know Christine Clancy, if you want to, Commissioner, address that as well.
Sure, Christine.
Sure, thank you, through you, Madam, through Donahue. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. So, I guess, two points in this update. One is the moratorium does begin on December first, that all contractors should report to engineering department before November sixteenth, this Monday, to obtain permits. And then, you know, beyond December first is really emergencies, or if it's a city-approved project for opening the road. But really, I guess, also the other part of this, this update is preparations for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one winter season. We have, we have been trying to recruit plowing contractors for the past month or couple months now, and just in doing that, we have been getting some people coming in, but looking at the rates in our neighboring communities, we decided to increase the rates, specifically to try to recruit more pickup trucks. We adjusted the rates, so that for plowing contractors, it's increased about ten dollars an hour. We also added a new rate, so that we now allow equivalent to an F-150 or a 1500 to plow in the city. And before this year, at least in recent years, we had not allowed that. So we're really, right now, if anyone is interested in plowing with the city, they should come down to DPW, or call us at nine seven eight six seven four four one one one. And we, we really, we do need more equipment right now. Contractors are coming in, but we do need a lot more contractors to be able to plow this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Council Elliott.
Thank you, thank you for the report. Christine, can you tell me, a couple of folks have approached me indicating that the terms of the insurance, the insurance limits, and I don't want to compromise, and we want to make sure the city's protected, but the insurance, the cost of insurance, is there some opportunity to adjust it, so someone with maybe just one or two pieces of equipment can apply, and that's what I've heard, anyway?
So we do have insurance requirements, and I believe that's our city standard, that's something that we have to discuss with the law department, but also this, in our reviews across other communities, I guess our insurance requirements don't seem, I guess, reasonable, I would say, but it's something I think we can consider maybe for future years, or it's something we can consider to look at. But we do have an insurance, general liability insurance of one million, of one million dollars, and that is, that really isn't that much, I guess, in an instance, it could be one vehicle, multiple vehicles. And then also, we do have workman's insurance requirements, which, if you're just plowing as one person, you do not have to have it, so that's something we do clarify with contractors coming in, because that is a frequent question.
No, I, let me, let me, I fully support that. I think it's important. We know that accidents occur, we know that, you know, property, residential properties get damaged, so I want to make sure that we are protected, but I didn't know if it was, whether it was bobcats or some smaller pieces of equipment, but if that's a standard and we're in line with other communities, then you've answered my question. Thank you.
Informational H, Madam Manager, diversity inclusion fund.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council, we have provided the council with an update in the packet regarding the status of a number of initiatives around diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that the council has undertaken and fostered for the past several months. And this is the first item on this update that I wanted to call the council's attention to, and that is announcing the citizen advisory committee to the Lowell Police Department. You may recall that, I think it goes back to June, when I think it was Council Samaris had filed a motion asking for the council to establish an ordinance to create a citizen advisory committee. The council took that matter up. It was researched by the law department. It was on for a public hearing on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and I believe it was unanimous vote by the council, establishing an ordinance that chartered a citizen advisory committee to the Lowell Police Department. And it was intended to provide a formal channel for the community input on matters pertaining to police, to safety, to law enforcement. And the city, let me just say, after the ordinance was passed at a public hearing, and I don't recall there was any, it seemed to be roundly supported, the city then engaged in extensive efforts to promote interest to serve as, on this committee. This was a period, we advertised for applicants on this committee. We reached out, not just to ordinary media sources, but to approximately fifty partners across the community, letting everybody know, especially, you know, those organizations or nonprofits that served diverse population, as well as all our nonprofit partners, we did send that to them. We left the application period open for over two months, to try and give everybody ample time to apply, and so we received applications, and I think it's a great opportunity here tonight to say the process, though it was intense and thorough, it was, I think, resulted in very well-qualified and distinguished members who will be serving on this advisory committee. You may recall that the council approved the ordinance that set forth nine members of the advisory committee, two of whom would have been Lowell High School students. We are appointing, have appointed nine, eight members. There's Nicole Buella, a Lowell High School senior, Zaris German George, a Middlesex Community College student, Nadar Fernandez, a UMass Lowell student, Pastor Cecilio Hernandez, who represents the faith-based community, Chan Van Thana, TAE, for the nonprofit sector, Michelle Rivera, to represent the business community, Michelle Martin, a community member, and also Frederic Young, a community member. As I said, the resumes were vetted. We are still looking for one high school member. It's hard when they're remote, and it's hard to engage with the students there, but we're going to continue to try. But the decision was made that it's more important to just get going with the committee of eight, and we will continue to try and find that other high school, Lowell High School member. So it's diverse. They have a meeting scheduled, their first meeting, for this Thursday, November twelfth. So this will be a Zoom meeting, and as I said, the, I know everybody is excited about this, and I think it's going to be a great value to the police department. I know Chief Richardson and his staff are very excited about working with this community advisory panel. So I wanted to, you know, make that announcement, so that it's been a long process since the ordinance was passed, but I think this is going to be a very important committee for the, for the city. Next, I wanted to bring the council up to date on the human resource audit. This was something that the council, back in June, had passed a motion, and I think that motion was, I'm sorry, I don't have the makers of the motion in front of me, but I think Council Drinkwater and Council Noon had requested that we look into, you know, the cost of doing an audit of HR audit, and looking at things in and around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and also whether there were other funds, grant funds, or anything available to pay for that. We reported back to the council what we, what we did after the council passed the motion. We crafted a request for proposals. The request was pretty inclusive, there were many things that we looked for in the request for proposal, and the only way we could really ascertain how much it would cost was by putting this RFP out. We did receive quotes that, again, ranged up to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and given the current state of the budget, we weren't able to move forward with the, with the bidders at that point. But following that and having conversations with many on the council, and the commitment and the desire to see what we can do, what we have done is, we have redrafted the RFP, and the idea was to redraft it in a way that seeks the core requirements that the motion initially intended. There may be other phases in another, you know, successive process, but to get started, and so that, that RFP should be posted, I believe, sometime this week, if not next week. And so, so we haven't walked away from the commitment to doing the audit, but we are, we are changing the scope as far as phase one, and anticipating... scope as far as phase one, and anticipating that maybe there'll be a phase two, and maybe there'll be a phase three. Let's see what phase one brings. I know the finance team has also been working to try and identify, are there some funds in the budget that can be repurposed? And so when we get the RFP back, we'll bring it to the council, and we'll have a discussion with the council as to where other funds might be identified. So I just wanted to bring the council up to date on that. The task force, I wanted to mention, it was just a few weeks ago, that was the task force, Establishing a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. That came about as a result of motions filed by Councilors Chow and Mayor Leahy, who had two different motions, but after both motions passed, and speaking to both the mayor and Councilor Chow, it was decided to just unify those two motions and have a mayor's task force on equity, inclusion, and diversity. And so the law department looked at other task force, other communities, put together the makeup, the composition, the functions of this task force. We brought that back to the council in October, and that was adopted by the council, and I know the mayor's at work filling out that task force. I also wanted to bring the council up to date on the Equity and Inclusion Fund. This was the subject of a few motions here. This was, you know, on the agenda, and it's on the agenda tonight. I don't want to get ahead of the report that Connor has put together on the Equity and Inclusion Fund. But essentially, the council had passed motions to establish an Equity and Inclusion Fund, to look for private monies, grant monies, and the like that could be used for this purpose. There was also a motion, I think it was Councilor Samaras, and Councilor Elliott, to see about including a checkbox on your tax bill to contribute to an Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Fund. And so, as I said, there's a report tonight about that. There's a recommendation from the Finance Committee Department as to what they're recommending is how we move forward in this. And so I don't want to steal Connor's thunder, because he'll be talking about that. But I did want the council to know, you know, that's also a result of motions passed by this council, to do, you know, affirmative action around establishing funding for some of the initiatives that the council may want to adopt in the future. Lastly, I wanted to bring the council up to date on the issue of diversity training for our employees in the city. As we had reported previously, we had, we had actually begun some training in this area last June. We had offered a cultural awareness and diversity training for city employees, and this had to do with trainings offered employees and to address important matters such as cultural awareness, racial equity and inclusion, unconscious bias, and the like. We, after hearing from the council, we also proceeded with another training on August 4 of this year for our employees. That was a cultural awareness and diversity. We then had another training for our employees, the unconscious bias training, that was on September 17 of this year. And then there was also the series on racial equity and inclusion, exploring awareness, and that was, that's ongoing, but that was on September 29, 2020. And there's an upcoming training in November as well. So HR has been, Mary Calery and her department has been publishing and providing, these are Zoom trainings, you know, we can't bring all the employees together, but we are offering these trainings in this pandemic era. So those are just some of the highlights, and I just wanted to, because we've had so many initiatives, so many motions, sometimes we don't look at them all together. And so I know I get questions from councilors, where are we on this, and where are we on that piece? I wanted to give a report to the council, so you had everything in front of you.
Okay. Before we get the questions, do we want to hear the report from Connor Baldwin first? Do you want to do that, or do you want to make comments first?
It doesn't matter, Mr. Mayor, either or.
Why don't we just have Connor go first, and then we'll jump in with our questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to detail the recommendation of the Finance Department, and that would be as it relates to the Equity and Inclusion Fund. There's a report included in the packet which lays out several possible ways to deal with donations. One of the key things to keep in mind is to ensure that the expenditures are for a public purpose, and it is the recommendation of the Finance Department that the best way to deal with those funds would be for the council to vote to set up a special purpose stabilization fund, and then to take advantage of the most recent municipal modernization provision, which allows for a certain portion of specific receipts to be dedicated to a special purpose stabilization fund. So that will achieve two things. It will dedicate these donations into a fund which will earn interest in the bank. The interest will be credited to the fund, unlike most funds under the law where the interest would be credited to the general fund. And it will require a vote of the council for expenditures to be made, which will ensure that the public purpose test is met. That is, there's more information in the report for the council to consider, and that could be considered in a finance subcommittee, or a vote could be prepared to set up the special purpose stabilization fund and to dedicate those receipts to the fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a good recommendation. We can send it to the Finance Subcommittee, but I feel that we should, we should vote on that recommendation, establish that stabilization fund, and start working with the vendor to put a notice in the tax bill, which essentially is looking at the fourth quarter. So if there's no objection, I'd make that in the form of a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
On the, which option?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to make one more comment, if I may, that as it relates to the tax bill, the information that can be put on the tax bill is very limited under the law. And so I want to be very clear that what we're doing is not a checkbox, because there are only specific things, like a scholarship fund, or a veterans fund, or a fund for disabled residents, where a community can put a box on the tax bill where funds can be directed. What we're talking about is providing information to the residents via a flyer that would be inserted with the bill. And so once the council takes action to set up the fund, we will include information as to how residents may go about donating to the fund. Thank you.
Yep, that's right.
No, that's a good clarification. I concur, and I still would like to make that in the form of a motion that we proceed.
Okay. So a motion by Council Elliot, second by Council Mercia. Did you have a question on this, or something separate?
I have two things, but a question on this. You just answered my question, as we can put a notice, because I've heard in some cases where all we could do is a little checkbox, and that wouldn't be sufficient. So we can put in an explanation of the purpose of that funding, correct? Okay. And the only other suggestion I would make is that we have actually some type of kickoff to the community and make sure that the newspaper and the radio stations here, that this will be coming in that bill, so it's not put aside. But thank, that's good work, and it's complete. Thank you for that.
Okay. So roll call on that?
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Drinkwater.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Rourke.
Yes.
Council Samaras.
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Okay. Before we move on, Council Samaras.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city manager for the report that she gave, you know, discussing diversity, equity, inclusion, all the many steps that this Lowell City Council has taken. But I do want to address the fact that we received a letter from DEI that will say, question some of the activities, or I think almost insinuation, lack of activities towards dealing with the issue of diversity in the city. And normally, these letters are something which we put to the file and are dealt with. But I'd like to make a motion that the manager write a response to DEI as to what the city has done to deal with many of the issues that have been raised on equity, inclusion, racism, you know, so many other avenues. I mean, you touched upon many things here tonight, but also there have been motions dealing with housing and other issues that are very important to making sure that Lowell is one of the best livable cities in the country. And so the thing is, I just think that at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the manager do, that she addresses this letter to DEI, and also make it available to our constituents, so they can clearly understand a lot of the steps that are taking place now, and a lot of steps that are taking place to establish a sound platform for the future in dealing with many of these issues, complex issues that are facing our country. But I think in Lowell, we've got the right idea, we've got the people willing to do it, we've got, what I'm saying is, we have the horses that can make this work. And I just think that we want to make sure that our constituents are fully aware of what is going on and what we're working on. So I just need a second to that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. You get that? Thank you.
So a motion by Council Samaras, second by Councilor Conway. Council Elliot.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on this just a little bit, because my name is clearly cited in the communication. First of all, can we find out who sent this communication, Madam Manager? Because to me, this is almost anonymous. It comes from the DEI consortium, although I see in the newspaper today there is a spokesperson, so maybe, maybe that's the person, because the only communications we receive from the consortium is from Mr. Tubi Elie. So it would be helpful, but, you know, it's unfortunate that we got this letter, because for months and months and months, and you outlined pretty succinctly tonight, the efforts, actions that have been made. We just voted on another one tonight, but there's been motions filed by, I want to say, every single city councilor. So I really don't know who wrote this, but there are many allegations, unfounded allegations, in my opinion, they're disingenuous. And just, you know, just for the people at home, I mean, there are some statements that we have targeted and retaliated against us, i.e. them. I have no idea what that means, but I do take it, I do take it personally, because nothing could be further from the truth, since we went to the listening session, to the city council, and the administration took immediate actions, whether it was through motions, whether it was through training, and we haven't stopped. So I'm not disappointed, well, I'm disappointed in the letter, but I think it's inflammatory. I think there were many statements in here. I'd like to know who wrote it, or if this was a vote, but we did not deny, here's a quote, "We denied that racism exists in the community." The resolution that we adopted was a pathway with concrete issues to address, and right at the outset, is, right at the beginning, we resolved that to reject all forms of racism. So I don't want to spend too much time, because either this individual, individuals, maybe they're not following city council meetings, I understand, but before, you know, letters are sent like this to us, from an organization that wants us to collaborate, and we are here to collaborate, and we have, I think it's, I just don't think it's just to make these allegations against this body and this administration. I'm glad you went through and provided the report. Maybe they, you know, whoever it is, this organization, we have worked diligently, we're not stopping, and, you know, we'll continue, but I guess I just wanted to, you know, make a few comments, that it's, really, it's disappointing that it's, the political statements, with their baseless statements, that we have done little to nothing. We haven't heard, we haven't listened, we haven't acted, when all of those, all of those statements are quite untrue. So maybe we can have a point person now. As I mentioned, I did read the article in the newspaper, and someone, individual is the communications spokesperson, so maybe we can keep in touch with them every time, which will be every other week that, you know, we act and make progress on a myriad of issues and actions that we have taken. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. That brings us to 5-3. Communication Planning Board Recommendation on Proposed Zoning Amendment to Rezone the Parcell at Rivers Edge Road from TTF to SMF zoning district. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Noon, seconded by Council Chow. 5-4. Appointments to the Community Preservation Committee. Madam Manager, anything on that?
No, just that we are requesting the, you know, the appointment. We put forth the two individuals for their appointment this evening. This is the really more informational. Under the statute, confirmation by the council isn't required, but this letter is notifying you. So the two individuals, Adam Backy of 53 Fairmont Street, and Sidney Liang of 23 Philip Street. We also included their resumes for the council to see. And the CPA, as we've talked about previously, they will, I believe their first ability to access the funds that have been earmarked for community preservation will be in 2022. Is that right, Connor? The CPA?
Twenty-two.
This fiscal year? Once they're, yeah. So, so we just wanted to let the council know.
Thank you. So Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the committee will be a nine-person committee, so the two is appointed, and the other seven are just filled in with positions within the city?
So those others are, under the statute, there are certain, certain categories that will be put forward, and I believe we received some. I know HR was trying to follow up with all of the organizations as to their nominations.
So then we, Connor said, so once we put that together, then the fund is available for use, and?
I think the funds are available in 2022, as I recall. I think it's in January of 2022, but we don't have the matching fund yet from the state. They will determine that.
They have about 30% right now, is that what it is?
About, and I think we're somewhere around, at last count, was it $800,000?
It's gone up.
Oh, it's gone up more. So there's, there is a, between what the city will have available and what the, whatever the matching fund is. Again, a new source of funding that we never had before, so it's a good thing.
And so recommendations made to the committee, can they come from the public, or from anybody?
Yeah, and then they will make recommendations to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Noon. Okay. Votes of the city manager, like a motion, a bundle, 6-1 through 6-5, by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Noon, and we have the second reading. Vote 6-1, vote to accept and expend $76,775, grant FY '20 to reduce injury and death and missing developmental disabilities. 6-2, vote to authorize city manager to execute lease agreement with Mill City Grows. 72, file a road. Vote 6-3, vote to authorize manager to execute temporary workspace in the Eastman Amendment Agreement with Boston Gas. agreement with Boston Gas. 6-4, vote authorize manager to execute underground electrical easement at 179 Bridge Street, and vote to transfer, 6-5, vote to transfer monies at the cemetery. Roll call? A motion by Council Rourke, seconded by Council Mercy, roll call?
Council Chow?
Yes. Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
That's nine yeses.
Thank you. Were there any reports tonight?
No.
Nope. 7-1. 7-1, wire inspection. TC Systems Incorporated AT&amp;T requests installation of two telecommunication conduits at the intersection of University Ave and Peteca Street. Need a motion to adopt, accept on accompanying orders by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Noon. 8-2, National Grid requests installation of 50 feet of 2-inch gas main to service 106 Gilmore Street. Need a motion to refer to public hearing November 24th at 20, 24th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. by Council Conway, seconded by Council Chow. 8-3, National Grid requests installation of underground electrical conduit on Appleton Street for service at 193 Appleton Street. Need a motion to refer to public hearing on November 24th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Samaras. City Council motions. 9-1, Council Conway, request city council adopt a tax resolution in support of the Lowell Police Department, forward, same to the state delegation, seconded by Council Samaras. Council Conway?
I'm going to read that resolution, Joe.
Motion, resolution supporting Lowell Police Department. Whereas Massachusetts General Court is currently considering legislation aimed at sweeping police reform to include fundamental changes in civil service process, collective bargaining, labor management, and qualified immunity to our police officers. And whereas City Lowell Council has witnessed our police officers perform to the highest level of professionalism even through a pandemic, civil unrest, and economic shutdown, and whereas Lowell Police Department was recognized as one of 15 exemplary police departments nationwide for best practices in law enforcement by President Obama's task force on 21st century policing. Whereas it is recognized by the Lowell City Council that our offices have always been sensitive to issues of fairness and justice and have responded to the care and compassion of, to the members of our community. Be it resolved that the Lowell City Council fully support the women and men who serve the city of Lowell on their police force and further condemn any and all actions to delegitimize, insult, harass, threaten, and/or use violence against the institution of law enforcement. Be it resolved that the Lowell City Council wish to convey to the Massachusetts General Court that we stand with our police department in solidarity and support, if not diminishing their current civil service process, collective bargaining, labor management, and qualified immunity. Mr. Conway?
There is a registered speaker here, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Registered speaker.
Sure.
Eileen Morrison?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Eileen Morrison, and I live at 23 Bertram Street. I am here to urge you to vote no on resolutions 9.1 and 9.2. I know that some people might assume that I am anti-law enforcement merely because I oppose these resolutions. Not so. I wonder if I can convince you to listen to what I am saying with an open mind today, the day before Veterans Day, by telling you that I have been a military spouse for 11 years, and my husband recently came back from his fourth deployment. I am often thanked for my part as a military spouse, but what I would appreciate more is to be listened to with an open mind. These resolutions seek to carve out special protections for police officers above all other public servants. Why isn't there a resolution in support of any other public sector union? If the police are as good as we uphold them to be, why do we need to support qualified immunity? How much is the city going to be financially on the hook for? When this council was considering whether to declare racism a public health crisis, many counselors were concerned about the financial ramifications of that declaration. What are the financial ramifications for our city by committing to pay without limit suits against police officers, no matter how egregious their conduct might be? Members of the military are held to rigorous standards through the Uniform Code of Military Justice, the UCMJ. Why don't we seek to hold our police to equally high standards? Finally, why would this council even consider a resolution that, quote, condemns insulting the institution of law enforcement? I don't understand what that means, but what I do know is that targeting certain types of speech is a good way for this city to become entangled in another costly lawsuit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the, the comments from the individual that called in, and I do respect that. I will say that I've been thinking of this, of doing some type of a resolution supporting the police for a number of weeks, and I felt that it was important for me to share my thoughts with my fellow counselors and in, in response to supporting our police, especially in light of the fact that the Massachusetts General Court is contemplating making changes to their civil service process, collective bargaining, labor management, and qualified immunity for our police officers. Let me just take a moment for, to explain why I do support the police in the city of Lowell, and it goes back many years ago. Going back into the early 1990s, I was a teacher at Lowell High School, and I can remember having a meeting at the end of, a general meeting, staff member meeting at the end of school, and it was actually by headmaster William Samaras, and he explained that the police were going to be part of the high school, and they were going to be here on a regular basis, and that was through the DEI program. And I will say, I was not alone in this, but there was, I think there was a little bit of apprehension, and I wasn't sure if this was really a good idea or not. However, I think that when I worked with them for a number of years, and I certainly saw what they, what they actually do, and it was, it was incredible work, it really was. And I'll tell you, if, if we go back to Chief Ed Davis, and I think that we all remember him, and he was, and he did an incredible job, and he reached out to the community in so many different ways. And he actually, in, back in 2002, he created a council, and it was all ethnic, different backgrounds, and I know that they met once a month, and I'm not sure whether they still have that now, but talking to police officers, and they said it was a great opportunity to reach out to the community. I, I will say that, you know, when we take a look at our, our police department, which was, which we mentioned in the, in the resolution, that we are very fortunate to have a police department that was actually picked as one of the 15 exemplary police departments in the entire country. And when you think about that, you know, we're, we're talking about almost 18,000 police departments in this country, and we are one of 15. So that tells you that, you know, that where we do have an exemplary police department, and I think that, I think now you'll, you'll understand some of the reasons why, that I personally think it's a, a good idea to support the police and support the, the fact that, you know, and let me just, let me just regress for a second. When we go back to me, myself being at the high school as a teacher, but also as a housemaster, school committee person, and city council. Again, I've worked with these police officers. They are, they are an incredible team, the things they do to help out the kids, and they helped out the staff and also parents. So now you, I think you know that why I am supporting the police in this resolution. And I want to make it perfectly clear here, it's not that we're giving the police, we're asking for anything different, but what we don't want to do is diminish what they already have, nothing in addition. And we talk about unlimited immunity, that's not true. It's qualified immunity. So if somebody is doing something wrong, then they will be held accountable for. So with that, I think that it would be, I certainly hope that my colleagues will support this, and I humbly ask for their, for their vote on this particular motion, supporting the Lowell Police Department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very important, I think this is a very important motion. It's, it's important to me, my family's involved, you know, with the police. Nationally, there's been a movement to defund police, to take away basic protections that allow them to do their job. For me, this motion is simply to send a message to our state delegation that the Lowell Police Department deserves their support, as stated in the resolution. It addressed the fact that Lowell Police were acknowledged by President Obama, as Counselor Conway has stated, but also President Clinton acknowledged the Lowell Police Department for great community policing. But for me, it's even more than that. Counselor Conway is correct, as headmaster in Lowell High School, I gave the DEI officers an office at Lowell High School. And just for the record, first DEI officers that were there were Officer Mike Counselor and Peter Geekus. Then he was joined by Jack Dolan. The thing is, they were so supportive of the students. Now, they did most of their work in the fourth and fifth grades, but a lot of the students that they worked with had come to the high school and were a support team for the DEI officers. So we had many programs that we had at the high school that we were able to do that were very successful, and this was so successful that we looked at putting police into the high school. Lowell High School was the first high school to have police officers located and staffed at the high school. Simply put, these police officers worked well in keeping the Lowell High School students safe from outsiders, but more important, they helped many of the needy students. I remember officers coming to me to say that you should see the conditions that so-and-so student was living in. These police officers became social workers, parents, guardians to many of these young men and women, ensuring that many did graduate because of the personal work done by Lowell Police Officers. You know, I can remember during 9/11, we cried when we saw police officers and fire people running towards the burning buildings. Many never saw their families again. This is who they are. These police officers need our support. I want this referendum to encourage our delegation to give our police the support and protection and training to allow them to do their job. It's as simple as that. We want to be able to help them do their job because when you have a police department that's effective, it works for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council Mercy, then Council Drinkwater?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw this very well-put resolution, I thought this is tremendous, and it's just how I feel, but I couldn't have said it so eloquently as this resolution. I wholeheartedly support it. I think there's a lot of concern about the police today, considering an incident that happened beyond our control by a police officer. That doesn't mean that our police department is in that particular area, the same as what happened in another part of this United States. I just think that it's, it's so unbelievable to think that there's so much of an uproar, and my heart goes out to the family of Judge Floyd, but the fact remains that we have a force here, a police force, I feel second to none. And the reason I say this is because we always hear the bad, but we never hear the good. And I'm thinking about, when I went to work this morning, one of the people that I worked with came in and said, "You'll never believe what happened." I said, "What happened?" He said, "My son was at Shed Park, he's a Lowell High School student, he was with a few of his friends, they were playing basketball, and all of a sudden down came a cruiser, and they thought, 'What's going on?'" And the police officer got out of the cruiser and proceeded to play basketball with them. But you don't hear about stuff like that. You hear about the bad things. And I'm thinking and taking this a little bit further because if you don't give some sort of coverage to people like the police that deal with the public each and every day, and I'm not saying the public sometimes are wronged, but there are many people that accuse people of something that isn't something that was, that was the way that it happened. There wouldn't be anybody that would want to be police. Same with the city council, we're indemnified, we're indemnified in such a way that I'd be losing my house if I ran for city council and they said I did this, I did that, I did this. Nobody would want to take a seat here. Nobody would want to risk the fact that they're, they're putting their life on the line, their, their whole being, to have someone come along and say something that isn't true, but they're going to be sued, they're going to lose all kind of money? I don't want that to happen, and I don't want to defund the police. I say defend the police is what we say. And so I wholeheartedly agree with this. I wish I could say it a little bit more eloquently as the resolution, but I can't, but I'm saying it how I feel, and I support them 100%. Will they make mistakes? Yeah, I don't know anybody that is perfect. I make mistakes. I know you find that hard to believe when I say it, but yes, we make mistakes. I don't think to the degree that we should be penalized and lose our home, and I don't think they do egregious things on purpose. I think everybody in the city is trying to make this a better place. I see how Eileen Morrison feels, but I have to take a stand, and I do believe in this, in this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've honestly struggled a little bit with this resolution. I join each of my colleagues here tonight in expressing my deep and sincere appreciation for the men and women in the Lowell Police Department. They certainly deserve to be recognized for the hard work and sacrifice and the risks that they take each day when they report to their shifts. What I struggle with is that this resolution goes beyond that, and at least as I read it, resolves for this council to take a position against the major elements of police reform legislation that has been brought forward by the governor and passed with sizable majorities in both the State House and the State Senate. Now, none of these respective pieces of legislation are perfect. The House and the Senate bills have spent the last several months in a conference committee where differences are being ironed out, and, which will hopefully make the final product better. But what I, what I really struggle with this resolution, resolution of what it does, is sending a message to the legislature after years of advocacy from the Black and Latino Caucus in the legislature, which helped bring this legislation forward, after dozens of hours of public debate in, in both branches over the last months, and now months into a conference. hours of public debate in both branches over the last months, and now months into a conference committee negotiation, that the legislature should simply walk away from the important reforms that have already been voted on and passed. Now, I don't believe at all that support for the men and women of our police department and support for police reform legislation are conflicting views. But this resolution, I believe, unnecessarily places those two views in conflict with one another. And ultimately, I think what's most important here is joining my colleagues in supporting this resolution and sending a message to our department that we support them in the work they do. But I, I think it's important that we do dig into a couple of these statewide legislative issues that we're, you know, going on, taking a position on. The resolution states that police reform legislation includes fundamental reforms to collective bargaining in the civil service process. And, you know, in my day job with the Massachusetts AFL-CIO, and having formerly served as Legislative Director of that organization, I've read and analyzed hundreds of pieces of legislation specifically for their impact on collective bargaining rights in the civil service process. And while both the House and the Senate bills do impact these areas, which always sets off alarm bells for me a little bit, I wouldn't characterize the changes that are made as being anywhere near fundamental. With respect to both collective bargaining and civil service, the only changes that I could find relate to how a police officer may be decertified or disciplined under the new system created under this bill for certifying officers, which Massachusetts currently doesn't do, unlike 46 other states that do have systems in place for certifying police officers. Under this system, if an officer, after an investigation and an evidentiary hearing, loses their certification or has their certification suspended, the venue to which they can appeal that decision moves from the arbitration process or the Civil Service Commission to a new venue that's set up under Chapter 30A, which covers adjudicatory proceedings for state agencies. If an officer is disciplined by their department, they still have the right to appeal that decision to arbitration or the Civil Service Commission. The other issue which this resolution addresses is that of qualified immunity. I don't think we have anywhere near the amount of time tonight needed to properly address this complex court-related, court-created doctrine of qualified immunity, which prevents lawsuits against public employees even when the constitutional rights of a citizen may have been violated as long as the public employee did not knowingly violate a clearly established law. As it's been practiced, I mean, this creates an extremely high bar to the courts, even when one's constitutional rights have been violated. And at the same time, it's also a very necessary doctrine to allow public employees to be able to effectively go out and do their job. So while the changes to qualified immunity in the Senate bill were fairly broad, the House bill appropriately, in my opinion, narrowed them to only make changes in the application of qualified immunity in one narrow situation. That is, if, following an evidentiary process and an appeal, a law enforcement officer is formally decertified for conduct that violates somebody's civil rights, then that individual would not be shielded from liability. And I've heard many officers talk about fear of losing their homes, fear for their family's future because of a decision that they might make in good faith and which could leave them exposed to civil liability. You know, I've heard some talk about leaving the job just because of the added risk on top of the other risks that they face every day, and that should absolutely not be the case. It, it should not be the case, and that's why I filed a motion also on the agenda tonight that will hopefully provide some clarity, as well as guidance on any action we may need to take as a council to ensure the continued indemnification of our public employees from personal liability from lawsuits. But it doesn't mean, in my opinion, that we should oppose any change to qualified immunity, which right now can stifle the constitutional rights of victims by preventing them from ever receiving their day in court, and can, can also lead to a lack of accountability. So I wish tonight that we weren't being asked to take sides against those who have been calling for these reforms, who really, I think, have finally had their voices heard through the social uprisings that have happened over the past few months, you know, in order to be able to show our support for our very deserving police department. So, you know, as I said, I am supporting this resolution, but I did feel that because I also think that the reforms moving through the State House are good reforms, are prudent reforms, I did want to, to get into that. And, you know, I'll, I'll let my, you know, words stand on their own in terms of what is happening at, at the State House. But I really do hope that moving forward, respectful police and, and reform need not be mutually exclusive terms as, as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The subject of this resolution is a resolution supporting the Lowell Police Department, and the key word here is Lowell Police Department. I'm not in any position to make any comments at the legislature for the state level, but anything, because we are elected local officials and try to do what's best for, for the community. And this year, for better, for worse, we've been dealing with many of the national issues. But when it comes to making a decision, voting for the best for the, for the city, for the community, as I mentioned before, I will always vote to make sure, to make sure that our community, our city comes first. With that said, you know, there are many good points that are in this resolution, but I want to bring out one very, very important verse, that is the fourth verse in this resolution, where it says, "Whereas it is recognized by the Lowell City Council that our officers have always been sensitive to issues of fairness and justice, and have responded with care and compassion to the members of our community." And I believe that's what makes our Lowell Police Department different from many of the, not to put any police department anywhere down, but again, I'm, I'm going to just focus on our Lowell Police Department, because that's what this resolution, and that's what we are asked to do. And that is why we're different from the last few meetings. I've heard report that, you know, our police officer, they spend their, their free time doing charities work, they're raising funds to help different organizations, to help families personally. They do this day in, day out, year in, year out, and, you know, we have so many police officers in our department that are very proud to be police officers, and that's because they want to serve the community. They want to serve the diverse community, and I, I want to support that. I think what's important for the, the community is our police department that have done a fantastic job. Just to go over the chronology a little bit to see how, how we are different. The George Floyd incident happened on May 25th, and within a week, our chief of police put out a statement denouncing that action, denouncing the officers involved and the actions of the officers involved. And of course, that was tumultuous times. There were rallies, protests, and riots pretty much going around to many cities, many states across the country. And of course, we're going to have our rally, and I was concerned if there's going to be violence, going to be a lot of burning of small businesses, a lot of destruction of properties. And I called the chief right away, just concerned at first about, you know, are there going to be any problems and so forth? And the chief right away responded, you know, the, the young people, they want to have a rally, and they want to have it. The next day, it's already closed. He made sure that his staff provided the permit so the young people can have a rally. And we have a few rallies. Each one of those rallies, the, our chief and the police department actually have these young people to gather peacefully, to have no violence, to have no issues. And there was one incident in one of the rallies, if people can recall, there was another person that came from outside of town and started harassing one of the young people that was involved in, in the protest, in a peaceful protest. And the police right away responded, got to the bottom of the situation, and took actions against the person that was harassing the protester. Many incidents like that, and they, there was another order from, from the police department to, the duty to intervene. And I thought that's very, very important, you know, because many times when the colleagues or the, the police officer sees somebody not doing right, they stand quietly, don't do anything. That's wrong. That's illegal. All these examples really to show that our police department is unique. They really care about the community. They, they are aware of the situations happening around us. They are aware of the situation happening across the country, and they choose and they act differently. And that's why I am going to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the legislation's pending in the House now with a conference committee that's not really, that's not concerned just Lowell Police Department. It's about a statewide reform. That said, I think, you know, the, the state legislatures in the Senate, I don't think they're going to stop the reform that is needed for the whole state. That said, I do intend it to support our police department, because certainly Counselor Mercy is correct, they're not perfect, but they've done a good job in conforming to the rule and being sensitive to change, as stated by Counsel Chow, with regard to the chief. Put out the, you know, press release condemning of the killing of George Floyd. And I'm, I'm also confident that with the Citizen Advisory Committee that we instill now, or establish now, that the chief and the police department will work with those committee to try to make some of those changes into a policy procedure down the road. So that said, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is probably the easiest motion in my time as a counselor to support. You know, the statements made by other counselors, you know, before mine, you know, agree with, with all of them. You know, the Lowell Police Department has been at the forefront of many of these issues going back years and years, you know, proud to, you know, to live in a city in which they serve, to have friends and family that serve our department, and to have people in charge that make the right decisions to, to protect and serve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Counsel? No, I'm all set. You all set? Counsel Ali?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much has been said, all of which I agree with. I'm proud to support the Lowell Police Department. Having sat here for two decades and gone through the various changes of community policing and then putting precincts throughout the city, the ability, I think, of our police force under various chiefs, under various administrations, city counselors, it's really kind of amazing, considering the diverse nature of this city, across the entire city. I think no one does it better than the city Lowell in extending outreach and relations with neighborhoods and community and organization groups. No, no one's perfect. Nothing's perfect. But I think that we are vigilant in the city, and we have been, to ensure that when there are issues, when there are problems, that we are right on it. So we live in, we live in a very uncertain time, very tumultuous times, and our police officers are, they're faced with many challenges. So I think the, the resolution is important. I think we need to stand by the people that go to work every day and their families to protect each and every one of us. And I, I thank them. I thank for them for their service. I thank for, thank them for putting their lives on the line every day. There's some bad people everywhere. There are bad people in this city. And I'd say, just looking over the last year, or two years, the number of serious crimes that are solved in the city, I, I think our police force does an incredible job. You just read the latest one with the drugs and the murders and piecing that together and going out of state. I'm impressed. So I, I thank Chief Richardson for his efforts. We, we're going to continue to do our job, and we support those that are doing their job in the blue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Conway?
Yeah, I'd like a roll call on that.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. Just quickly, I just want to say yes from, from Ed Davis, Ken LaValle, now I'm drawing a blank.
Taylor.
No, right.
Chief Taylor.
Chief Taylor, right before him, and now Chief Richardson. You know, they've continued this community policing. They've made a great effort here in the city, and, you know, when everyone, someone takes charge, you can see the difference in what they add, and certainly can see what Chief Richardson has brought to the table, and he's doing a fantastic job. So we're going to support this. So roll call?
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Thank you. Next motion, Counsel Drinkwater. Request city manager direct the law department to report on the city's policy for indemnifying employees from personal financial liability for damages resulting from a lawsuit against a city employee for conduct that occurred during their official course of duty. Said reports should also include recommendations on any necessary changes to ensure law enforcement officers are indemnified from the personal financial liability for civil damages in anticipation of changes to the state law regarding qualified immunity. Seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Drinkwater?
There is a registered speaker. She had spoken earlier. I don't know if she's going to speak again, but Eileen Morrison?
I don't wish to speak again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I spoke to this briefly in my remarks on the previous motion, but the way that indemnification works right now statewide is that the, the state does not require municipalities to, to indemnify any public employees against personal financial liability if they're subject of a lawsuit, named in a lawsuit for something they did on the job. It's my understanding that it's near universal, if not totally universal, that cities and towns in Massachusetts do provide some form of indemnification to their public employees, and we actually have that here in the city by ordinance, that we do indemnify public employees, so that they're not held personally financially liable, that they're not going to lose their house, not going to lose their kid's college savings fund if they're named in a lawsuit. I have heard a lot of concern from employees that should there be changes at the state level to qualified immunity, and again, both branches did act on some form of change in qualified immunity, whether that indemnification would still apply across the board. So I, it's very concerning to people. I've heard it from, from a number of, of police officers, that it's a real concern, and there are people who are legitimately looking at leaving the job, again, over the assumed personal financial risks. So I'm hoping that through this motion, you know, we can just be, be ahead of it. If there's anything we need to do to make sure, you know, we send employees out on the job, and not, and not just members of law enforcement, but all public employees, that we send them, you know, out on the job with the peace of mind that if they're acting in good faith, and again, not covering, you know, egregious or negligent or malicious behavior, but if they're acting in, in, in good faith, that, that they're covered and they're not putting their financial future at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Nine three, Counsel Noon. Request city manager have proper department replace missing traffic mirrors at the railroad bridge on Lawrence Street. Seconded by Counsel Mercy. Counsel Noon?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is for safety.
This is for safety reasons, Mr. Mayor, that missing mirror, I'm surprised that CFO, you know, Connors didn't notice that because that's his way to work, right?
He took the mirrors.
So, I mean, all he needed is phone call to fix it, so now he can do that with this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion passes. Nine four, Counselor Chow, request public safety subcommittee have a discussion with Lowell Police Department regarding current crime statistics in the city. Seconded by Counselor Mercia. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to refer this to Public Safety Subcommittee.
Sure. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Last motion of the night by Counselor Rourke, request Lowell License Commission consider a one-time reduction in restaurant license renewal fees for twenty, for the year 2021 due to the impact of COVID-19 and to approve any such reduction based upon the licensing commission discretion. Seconded by Counselor Noon. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mercy speaks for itself, I think, not to include liquor stores to give the manager a heart attack or the one-time fees or things like that, so I'm sure that total number will come down a lot. And hopefully, any further assistance we can give the restaurants, I've heard, I'm sure as my fellow counselors have, the administration of restaurants that have closed down for the winter or of restaurants that have been closed for weeks, if not months, since this has happened. And to, you know, to see them have to continue to be closed and to have an extra charge on top of things, so whatever else that we could, to do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, and through you to the council. So we can ask the law department to report on what can be done. We totally understand the intent of the motion. I did have a brief conversation with the solicitor as to can we limit it to certain categories? And I guess this list is on, so we'll get that.
I'm sure that, you know, there are some businesses that have licenses that are booming because of this.
Correct.
You know, and again, and I'm hopeful that there can be a separation and if, you know, for some reason, if things are, you know, through America, back to normal come April, May, or June, you know, adjustment can be made. But again, you know, we've all heard of places that have not been able to operate.
Right.
You know, at all, or just, you know, and I think the measures they were just put in place a couple of weeks ago where you had to be out by 9:30. Again, I mean, the damage that's been done to small businesses and small restaurants, even, you know, it's just, has been, you know, doubled down over the past, you know, couple of weeks.
Yeah, and some of them haven't been able to open at all. So, we understand that. I just wanted to, you know, we'll ask the law department to give us a report on what the flexibility is, whether it's the license commission or the council. But I also did want to share this with the council because Christine McCall did mention it to me today. There's a new fund for small business, mass growth, through Mass Growth Capital that was just announced, and it's pretty well financed and small businesses, including under five employees, and then there's another category, can apply for assistance in Christine and her team are working and with our small businesses to do that. I think it becomes available very soon. But the point is this, a small business is for $25,000 grants or $75,000 grants, which are sizable for a small business, and they can be used for things like licensing fees. So, we'll get that report too, but I wasn't aware that it could be used for that. So, which is good news, right? But...
And, you know, I think the council's opinion, what the city has done for their businesses has been extraordinary, you know, and probably above and beyond most other towns and communities in the state, you know. That being said, I would imagine that through the solicitor's office and the licensing commission, you know, they could probably trim down, you know, the list of who's really been affected by this severely. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I was wondering, when you fill out an application for this, to apply for this grant, do they, I'm understanding that they look at your taxes of the previous year, and if it's too high, you don't get approved, but the reason I say that is because if you file jointly with your husband, he doesn't own that business, you do, and because he makes a little bit more money than you possibly could jointly, you're not going to get nothing. And that seems to be the case with someone that I'm trying to fight for that isn't getting anywhere but was out of business the whole length of time that this coronavirus struck, but because her husband made a little bit more and it was jointly, she's not getting anything. I don't think that's fair at all.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not certain on this new one that they're coming out with, you know, whether it's going to have the same kind of, you know, eligibility, but we'll look at that.
Okay.
And I know, as I said, Christine McCall is working with small businesses so that they become aware of what's available.
Because if you went into this business, they did everything that they were required to do, put the plastic up, the, you name it, they did everything. Unbelievable, and yet they're not getting any help at all. But anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the same note, with regard to the small business grant that the matter manager has indicated from the state, it's $50.8 million. It's been, they rolled out a couple of weeks already. So, I saw Frankie Dakota today, been out there in a number of storefronts, not only in the downtown, but also in the Highland area, Couples Square, the Middlesex and Brent Street, and Bridge Street, and so many other areas. So she actually helping do technical assistance to them. I mean, so if you, what requires, as Counselor Mercia indicated, tax return and so on and so forth, those lists are that complicated for any small business owner, but with her help, she's been out there, with her help, they, surely they're going to be able to do, to capitalize on some of those grants. Let's say $25,000 for a business that employs five or less employee and more for those who employ more. Unfortunately, the deadline Thursday this week.
Okay.
And they're trying to ask for extension, but it's not happening. So, but there's going to be another coming down the road with this outreach that CTIs through Frankie Dakotas and other have been doing. I think, you know, with the rollout with the CARE Act that a city get, certainly is going to help in term of reaching out to more people, educating in term of how to apply for it and so on and so forth. This is something that really needs really technical assistance to do so.
Thank you.
And just, there's, just on that note, I know there's an economic development bill pending in the legislature, which, you know, hopefully has some assistance for small businesses in that economic development bill. Still in conference committee, but, you know, let's hope that that gets released soon.
Thank you. Announcements. Madam Manager, did you want to?
Oh.
Just updates on the smell or?
Yeah, just quickly, I wanted to let the public know that the city of Lowell will be doing a flu clinic for our residents over 60 years old. This is going to take place on Wednesday, November 18th, from 10:30 to 12:30. These are free of charge for, this is the, I don't know, you call it a superdose, but for the enhanced dose of the flu vaccine. And you need to just call the health department to, you know, set up a time and an appointment. This will be done at the senior center. And if anybody needs information, please contact the health department, contact my office, but it is next Wednesday for those who haven't gotten the flu vaccine yet for our seniors. I did also want to let the, we've received some concerns, some complaints regarding Duck Island and the odor coming from it, which has been admittedly a problem, especially in recent weeks. I did want to give, I don't think I have it here, Mr. Mayor, if you have, here it is. Mark Young did provide a memo, which we put on everybody's desk, just because I know the public is wondering what is going on. So the memo we have just gives an update. This is a phase, another phase of upgrading the facility. This is Phase 2B on the construction project over at the facility, and it's been ongoing. During much of the construction, it hasn't been a problem, more recently it has, because of different, they're putting in new pipes, they're cleaning out some of the holding tanks that causes the odor to be exacerbated, and also just putting in all of the new components of the upgrade. That's, they're doing their best to contain the odor and trying to do these upgrades at times that it won't be as obnoxious for people. I think the bottom line, what is important, is these upgrades will be completed in three months. So, I know there was some question recently about what was the date, so we do have that. That is, that will be within three months. We are certainly hopeful that the odors will abate during that three months. So they're in the process of repairing pipelines and six primary clarifiers that can contribute to the odor. So there's many different parts of this upgrade, but it's all aimed at the odor control, and it is, I just want people to know, it is a high priority for wastewater to control odor as best they can. So, please bear with us, we're doing everything we can to minimize it. I know, I wake up to the smell every day, I don't even have to walk out my back door. It's like, comes right through because I think I'm right across, this is a straight shot from Duck Island to my yard. So, I get it, and, but Mark has assured us, they are working diligently to try and complete this upgrade, but the date we have, just so people know, is it should be all completed in three months.
Thank you.
That was, that's all I have so far.
Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is invited to a tour of 33 East Merrimack Street, that's the Bridge Club right across from the auditorium, and that'll be Monday at 1:00 in the afternoon, and Bob Cox is the director. As well as, my question would be, is there any veterans services or anything going on tomorrow that you know of? Because I know of one that is, so do you know?
I checked on that today and I didn't see any on the agenda or hear from anybody.
All right. Well, I'm understanding that there's something at 10:00 tomorrow morning where a group of veterans will be gathering to throw flowers into the bridge by the auditorium there, how we do that ceremony. That's all I know, 10:00, and that's the only one that I...
At the auditorium.
Yeah. Well, they're not going to go at the, at the bridge, yes.
Okay.
It'll be outside.
All right. Before we adjourn, is Officer Van, you're still out there? We just want to thank you for your service. You are a U.S. Air Force veteran.
Oh.
And we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Woo-hoo.
Motion adjourned by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Samaras. Thank you.
Happy anniversary, Counselor Rourke.